You didn't want to sign your letter of will, John?
No. My fine nets are for me and my family.
I was thinking about this, obviously, with the bank, that they're working with it. They're basically saying that they don't trust the credibility of this of Roberts County.
Well, the guy, the guy that came, that Nick was dealing with, were coming in. Like he had this resolution, which I've seen happen before with, when we leave other things, bigger equipment. But it's like, $25,000. Okay, is this yours? Did you sign yours?
Yeah, mine is Dennis Johnson.
Oh, this is Dennis, okay.
We can sign it. It's big on the bottom here.
Oh, but I wasn't supposed to.
If you want to sign it on the back, the correct comments.
Where it's assumed. Where are you from? I know my weight. First of all, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Additions or corrections for minutes, January 19.
I just, I want the thing underneath where the highway, when we're talking about, Stipend feels that should get fully almost like the highway work this week. It's not exactly the same. It's a lesser amount though, right? So you need to think some reference to the fact that it's a lesser amount. Can we put in their $150? What do the other guys get, $250?
$22.
$225?
No.
Make some reference to the fact that we need a lesser amount even like $125 or something?
Okay.
Anything else on the board? Is there a motion to approve the minutes and today's agenda? Motion by Temple, is there a second? Tom, thank you. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. I have a motion there. Any public comments today?
Springdale, Springdale, Thomas, Steve Rinder and some of the other board members, what we call in next week, a little after 10, same time, that's here. And they're looking to replace one of their town bridges with a call bridge. And they kind of wanted to know if the county was going to help out. And it's going to be between section four and nine. He was going to call today, but just didn't get dressed, some of the other board members. Be able to do it this week.
Does that philosophy kind of been anyone where I was here, used to help people out a couple times a year? It seemed like, oh, after you have that SB1 where they have the ability to, 50 cents for a thousand evaluation for specific projects, and it seems like we kind of, getting support, does that go out there?
That's, I guess, where I'm at. I mean, we got so many town bridges that I hear enough complaints on them. I'm not sure how to fix that town bridge first, is what I, that's just my opinion of it. If the SB1 or the OTC, like, I don't know. But that doesn't mean.
This is a township bridge?
Yes. I think the benefit to them would be that they could buy their call bridge through the county on the state debt system. I've got the breakdown, that's, that's beneficial. They'd get a better price break that way, so.
And they do participate, they do have a cent bill. They have 10 cents, 10 cents per thousand.
Oh, they do.
For $2,021.
Well, that should.
Cable $2,021.
They anticipate places to do that sometime, right? That's every meeting every year, right?
Yeah, they have to do it at the end of meeting every year. And only at the end of meeting they can do it.
Yeah.
And that's the only way.
Specific use involved.
That's the only way it can get voted on, is at the end of meeting. From those people who are attending the end of meeting. It's not everyone in the township, how much they expect. I don't think we've had any townships that have gone to a whole other township.
We've got Heather Nelson on, but we have our state's attorney coming forward.
I don't have anything for you guys from my office this week. I'm more so stopping to see if anything came up on your guys' end for me.
Yeah, nothing in this way.
Just want to try to make it a day that happens to get over here, or a week that happens to get over here every week, just to check. But if there's not anything, I'll let you guys move on with your day.
See, we've been here, stayed up for weeks, the way that package lost in the last two minutes here. Yeah, he's in mourning, he doesn't, I don't still. The group was watching, just kind of questioning that decision, I have to do it for that force down. Warren, welcome back.
Yeah, it's good to be back.
Squirt. Thank you.
All right, welcome back. Well, I've always been the actress, but as of January 14th, I'm officially off COVID investigations. As much as in the learning experience, and definitely I have three years under my nursing period if I'm getting a pandemic, I was ready to be back to my regular jobs. So as of January 14th, I am, like I said, back doing regular community health roles and duties. With that, Brianna Adling from Day County will no longer be doing services here in Roberts County. She dropped down her FTE to part-time. They haven't really done a whole lot with the FTE that's still available to fill that position here. Like Heather's only four days a week, we can look at offering it to her to go up to five. We kind of just left it be for right now with all the changing things right now. And Heather and I are able to keep up on our caseload right now. So we're just kind of hanging tight till this COVID stuff hopefully passes, slows down.
Is that happening soon?
Yeah, right. A magical question. So Heather's doing her four days a week, she is approved to do up to five every week or two. She's been doing five most of the time. Since I came back, she's been able to do her four days a week. And then Sarah Johnson continues to do her home visiting program, which is called Break Start, and she does that five days a week. So with COVID-19, along with everything else, there's a lot of things that got canceled, postponed in 2020. We normally have the dental, dental van come in September, and that didn't happen. But we are booked to have them again this September, and that's something I collaborate with Sarah Decole with. And look at funding for that. So right now, we will start talking about that again. We had a very good turnout when we did that. We had a lot of kiddos reached, we had a lot of good feedback, so it's something I'd like to continue. Just because dental hygiene and dental care for kiddos is super important. Our schools, we normally do screenings, so we do hearing, vision, scoliosis testing in Roswell Summit and Willoughby. They say they don't have a school nurse, hearing system, they do it themselves. Normally, we do those in the fall. Because of COVID-19, we weren't able to, but we got the go-ahead, come first of the year, that we can go back into schools as long as they're allowing us. So right now, we are scheduled in March to go to Willoughby. And then we're also, in the spring is usually when we develop our puberty education. And so far, we have that scheduled assistant, will be going and doing puberty education. So we're able to go in and do the flu clinics that we normally do in our schools, or even the pod that is normally done here. But we are offering the flu vaccine at the clinic, so people can come in and get it whenever. And hopefully, for the school year 21, 22, that sounds crazy to say, but we'll be back to our screenings in the fall, education in the springs.
Sarah, I just need to make a comment.
Yeah.
As long as we're talking about schools. I sunk last year, and I decided that I wouldn't do it this year, but I did go back after analyzing the, the way that the school system has handled their sanitation. And they have not had large outbreaks, in my opinion. I don't know if you've seen.
No, so we'll see how Roberts County will do very, very, very.
I was there last Thursday for a fall day. One observation I've noted is that, when I was there before, there was a whole lot of coughing, sniffling, clinic tissue was a constant, and is it happening this year?
No, I think.
Do you see that flu is down?
Yes.
Cold and coughs are down?
Yes, and so I think everybody taking extra precautions with COVID has drastically brought our numbers down a lot. So, yeah, it's kind of a winding way, per se, but the silver lining. But yeah, no, our schools, I've been, ten minor, nine are in contact for most, most of it. I also work closely with Sharon Holland. They've been amazing to work with, and asking them, their protocols that they're taking, the policies they've come up with have all been very helpful. And we haven't really had any outbreaks related to school. Usually, they can track them back to somebody at home who's there first, versus like actually originating in the school setting. So all schools in the county have been doing very well with that.
Excellent.
Yes. So immunizations, throughout the entire 2020 pandemic, we never did shut down immunizations, solely because we don't need outbreak of some of the disease that we already have prevention for. So children were never refused or turned away. And then we did see our numbers decrease during the 2020 year, and that's simply, I think, people have decided to just stay home. The fear of coming out, things like that. But we didn't stop trying to reach out to our parents. Each month, our office goes through all the children who we see for immunizations. We send out a letter as a reminder that their child would do immunizations. We make three contacts: letter, phone, email, however we can reach them. After three contacts, we do what they call deactivate their chart. Doesn't mean they can't come to us, it just means we stopped trying. We predict and hope to see a rise in immunization rates as the pandemic hopefully comes to an end or slows down. But again, we never wanted to quit immunizations, that was the one thing we stayed open for. Our WIC appointments, we do currently still do them over the phone. If the patients are in for immunizations, beings we have them now ready, we'll do the WIC appointment in person. If they don't have a working phone, again, we will do them in person, we don't, we're not turning them away. We don't have a timeline right now as to how long this will continue, but we hope we can start seeing patients again soon. Our WIC caseload, if you notice, under the summary of services, it did fall a little in 2020 compared to this year. But with the uncertainty, this is kind of expected. We hope to see our numbers to continue to rise, and we continue to reach out to all of our eligible clients. We're still reaching over 100%. The reason Roberts County reaches over 100% is we pull a lot from Bedlam, which is typically Marshall. But the average caseload from July 2019 to June 2020, which is our fiscal 2020 year, was 597 patients. So if you look at our caseload, not terribly, but it has dropped some if you compare it to the last three months, or nine months. The average numbers with certification, those are either new patients or patients who had a birthday, I guess. We did new certs, roughly 50 over the last nine months on average there. Our average immunizations administered kind of jumped around there for a while. We do usually see a peak in the summer, because kids are here not getting ready for school. And then our cribs, we still do the cribs for kids program, anybody who's not able to provide a safe sleep place for their child. We have packing place that can be distributed, they don't have to be on WIC for them. It's literally anybody who doesn't have a safe place for babies. And then the last two pages are just kind of our up-to-date infographics that we've provided from the state health department in regards to how the COVID vaccine is going out. We're currently in one D, and if you, the bigger one that was separate kind of showed down what group D is. People call our office a lot in regards to getting the vaccine, we do not carry it right now. I don't exactly know the reason why, but it is helpful right now that only one facility, I shouldn't say that there is two facilities in town that do it, IHS and CDP, but it's nice that only one group is managing it, in a sense, until we get to like the general public.
Does that say at some point in time you think your office will be involved in giving shots, or?
Yeah, so they, they did say that we eventually will have a vaccine. By the time we get it, it's going to be about general public time. Just, if we were to have it now, we'd almost have to collaborate with CDP anyways. To keep everything organized, yeah, yeah. So they've, they've been doing a great job with it up there, an amazing job. And so right now, they are doing, they're starting with 80 and older. And if you do find people ask, they actually just call up there. They put them on a list, and CDP is reaching out to them as to when there's time slots available to get scheduled, so.
Do you have any idea that at any point in time they'll be going like to people's houses for shut-ins? Or is that something that's never come up, or is it what the state is doing here?
I have never, I guess, heard that on a call, or had that discussed. It is something that I can bring up, because things like home health that are going in too is something that they could possibly do, but, I know they did go into like the nursing homes and stuff.
Sure.
Which is a healthcare facility, but at the same time, it's kind of no different than the ones that can't get out. So I definitely can ask.
And you'd be curious.
Yeah.
I remember we're being seen, I don't know.
Yeah, could you be like part of the mother body?
How they determine, right? Do they, do they go like the old, I mean, assuming you got the big listing thing, but did they work for the rate from the oldest to down to 65 or all of it?
And so it starts with those 80 years and older, and then they're still breaking down to an increment that they want to do now. We're going to do 70 and older, whatever the case may be. And then when they get to patients who have underlying health conditions, they start with two or more. You have two or more, and then drop down to.
What if you're not a patient of CDP, how would they know?
It's a screening question, I believe, that goes through. Yeah, you don't have to be a patient at CDP either to go there.
But they do it in the bottom, which you need on the list.
Yes, yeah.
So what I'm thinking too is, you know, because there is a list of questions. Now, if Jim Pearson is not moving on our list, we should call the clinic directly. Yeah, because they are moving faster than this, because my husband got his shot last Thursday.
Yes, so this is like a genetic statewide, not necessarily countywide, and we are moving much faster here.
And he's in the high-risk category. So, yes, CDP, I'll tell you, is doing fantastic job. They are, and they are so well organized, very, it is unreal.
That's kind of being ruined by Sanford though, right? But didn't Sanford have the northeast corner of South Florida?
We're just kidding, I've got seen that doing from Sanford, but the staff at CDP, I mean.
They kind of put together like a COVID team.
Yep.
And they've done an amazing job, and very, very organized, yeah.
I heard someone tell me a few about whether he was a nurse or something, but in order to give a shot, do you have to take like a three-hour course?
It depends on your background. So like some of the training that I had to go through was training how to give an immunization in general. And I already had that background of how to give a vaccine. But if you're not somebody who is, but you can be a nurse who's in research, and if they were pulling you in to do vaccines, you might have to start that training from the beginning. So it could take three hours.
Like a regular clinic nurse for a hospital, there should be injections, you're probably just.
Yeah, my training was like an hour, hour and a half, and a lot of it is, I mean, so that you know, you get trained on any reactions and how to respond to them, and things like that, so it is.
It's kind of funny, but going across, it takes a lot of time, but.
You can give a different animal, right?
Yeah, it is different. So, any questions that gets to you that, I mean, everything's going good there in the office. Keeping in touch with our clients. Like I said, we don't normally, everything's kind of an unknown.
Yeah, pretty cool, for sure.
Yeah, you have to start being okay with not knowing what's to come next. But we still have Ann and Carol down there, they're doing good. They're good to get back in the schools and everything. All right, well, if you don't have any questions, I'll see you then.
Yeah, worth it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I think people do want to wear masks, thank you, Sarah.
Yeah.
I don't want to waste a, a blanket on your shoulders, but.
Thank you.
I have a question on this, Bill. I don't think they should be paid without, kind of very nice thinking, because how do we know? It goes to an attorney, but how do we know in three months, we're getting paid for some of this?
What's the order you're talking about?
The court put it in 30 from, right?
Yeah, you should have, I just got, they now have to keep the judging.
You got the blood card, you sense?
I'm actually pretty confident that he's going to be, it's not even worse.
Shouldn't be paid. Why do mine still on this one? Yeah, I believe on all the 31, because we're paying $95 or whatever it is. No, are we paying just wages, or are we paying supplies, help on, or investigator?
I guess I just send a bill that says you only $800, and pay this, and do like, what for?
If you don't know, would you talk that when you see that?
No, absolutely not.
Well, especially if you were going to have an argument with a relationship. Say, well, I said, no, I'll say, well, part, I already paid part of that, and you don't want to look at it, how would I know?
I would guess that'd be something that the auditor would question too. And as long as we're talking about audit, the auditor, is our audit going to change for 2020 with the federal grants that we're receiving?
Yeah. It'll be on our.
750.
We'll be over that 750, so we'll have that extra audit.
Do you want to add something to that, or whatever?
Yeah.
It's all just changed on our performance.
You wanted to tell us about the purchase order?
Carrie had the purchase order for 75 hundred printed paper assessment. All those things were achieved from the clouds and Mitchell, $279 plus shipping. We have the, it just wasn't attached.
Is there something wrong with our printers, this pedal is black?
Yes, and we're waiting for, we're waiting for all connecting point to come up with the new part. Because we also have this problem of it's frungy.
Oh my gosh. This is this new printer here.
That's that one here, so. Well, yeah, it's just periodically. Yesterday, we finished these on our, on our copy.
Makes it easy to separate them.
Hey, Joe. Yeah, it's, it started, we were doing our, printing our tax notices. And then we were having issues with it not connecting to, we couldn't print off of that. I think I spent one, like three hours on the printer, the guy, and he wants me to run it. So, but it's, it'll print really good, and then all of a sudden, yesterday was.
Man, that's a sea board, geek, I mean, that's, it's a lot of crap.
It's a lot of copies, but, I mean, it's so dirty, it's gotten so dirty now, and so I was.
Yeah, it's probably because of weed and everything, it's just.
I know, but it doesn't look good.
No, you're right.
All right, next to my phone, okay, to approve the purchase, is there a sign to that? Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. I propose a vote, here.
And then I, this is from Jim Pearson, so we can send it, we just need a signature, so we can send with his, your quarter wage expenses. So it's just a form that needs to be signed by the, the.
Okay, just the certification, I want those to sign documents.
So we can get our quarterly.
The buzz? All right. I'm going to be gone by 1:00, so that won't be a problem.
Well, it's gonna be an issue. At lunch, this is to be where you gotta be by 1:00.
Maybe we can get that in even earlier.
Do you want to send them another message here?
Was it Fargo last, I guess, somebody, everybody works in that space. So, anybody, anybody, anybody. Look for. Charlie was all up for it. The group is still out. Yeah, I was really, then I went to water town yesterday like. Not so much. I wonder if Fargo had a city mandate? I think they do.
They do, yeah.
Okay. Okay. You know my signature stamp?
Sure, yeah.
That's right, so I guess I got everything.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just bring it in here and make sure it got all. Get all this down to. All right, good enough, thanks. Okay.
He's coming early. We gotta get Sheriff in early.
I'm wondering if they're gonna tear down that building.
Well, they said they had some artwork in there in the walls, they couldn't figure out if you had artwork on it or otherwise it was torn down. How long do you have? Before they figure that out?
Another beautiful day, huh?
Yeah, it's for sure. Not windy, I guess that's the only good thing about it.
Well, they're talking snow this weekend now again.
Are you really?
But look at all, all around us. I mean, we have it so, even Arizona.
Oh yeah.
Snow.
Yeah, I know.
They have three inches down there in. Kingsman.
Supposed to be up in the.
King.
Up in the hills?
Yeah, I'm not real sure.
Yeah, it, uh, we've been lucky this year, we have been. I'm so glad to be at the meeting rather than at work. They're all cleaning up the office right now. We had the carpets cleaned the last night.
Oh, okay. Did you get the wall fixed or?
The wall's fixed, except for the window has to be put in.
Okay.
Window and the framing around the window has to be done.
Yeah, okay.
And of course, COVID backordered.
Oh yeah, yeah, it's amazing, you just order anything and it's just.
Yeah, I broke my, I broke my Ranger. And I had to order parts for that, and that's all backordered too.
Don't try to order new Ranger, probably probably way out there apparently.
Yeah, I've heard that some of their stuff is way out to the middle of summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, kind of sucks.
Yes. Can't wait till it's over.
Can't wait till it's over yet. Although I see last week, yesterday in South Dakota, we only had twenty-two positive cases of.
Yeah, we've been going down, I think, I watched the post at the triflets on Facebook and another like at forty-five, fifty active hours.
Yeah. Yeah, we're down quite a bit all of a sudden this last week or so now, so. That's a good sign.
We're gonna have later.
That's a good sign, either, either we've already had it or we've.
Now these new strains coming in, first they thought they were contagious, now they're saying they might be more deadly too, so.
Yeah, I heard another strain's coming through, isn't it? So, get your vaccination, I guess.
On the list, I think I might a couple of this. Might be one of the V eight.
We do most of our mundane doctor's, that's Stanford. Then close that one there, says, well, maybe we should check there, and I said, well, you can't do it, you're not from Minnesota. Or, or then, but then Ronald O'Hamish got theirs over there, so.
And you hear those people down. You hear those people not in Florida, I mean, that's why I'm so.
Isn't that one state? You have to have a, you have to declare that you're a resident, don't we?
Oh yeah, that could be.
And, and that should happen, I mean.
Yeah, I guess different states are doing it different.
Yeah.
How, how does it affect all these snowbirds then, you know?
Yeah.
Lot of snowbirds own houses down there anyway, so.
Yeah.
But if they declare their residency.
Yeah, I suppose if they declare up here, then they're screwed.
You sell the driver's license to show or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I don't.
I'll never have to worry about that, cause I'll never be a snowbird, so. I can't afford it, for one thing. I don't know if I'll ever retire, I don't know if I can afford that even, so. I'm, I'm too much into buying toys and having too many other things in there.
It's a fine line.
Yeah. I still haven't found a camper yet either.
It's a twenty, it's a twenty twenty, it's got four hundred, well, nine or no cheaper than one.
We can't find that?
Same.
On the compass? I said, I saw someone that was advertising a twenty twenty year end Volvo works for, for cheap money too.
And that would be great.
Yeah, it's still a brand new car, I mean, it might affect your warranty. I don't know if it's gonna be worth it to you.
It's seats, you won't start. Really? Absolutely, I tried it, that's what I bought from my. Oh, I think it's what I did, I bought it on that website, I thought I'd. Pretty good. You have people in the workplace? Well, it's a, it's a dealer, I, I didn't buy from that dealer, but I heard a website called Car Gurus. So then what you're looking for, how far away? What kind of equipment you want, people might. Then it tells you if you're a good dealer, a better dealer, or a poor dealer.
So, Pat here, just a minute.
Yeah.
Well, it just comes up on the. First degree, didn't detect there's any disc on that whatsoever.
I will not be here next Tuesday. Bobby's got, um, twenty six calls, medical.
How we doing, Martin?
Good, good. How are you?
So, RC Technology is here. It's gonna be, uh, do a lot of underground. Uh, fire rock cable, home is a southern part of the country. And, uh, twenty road eighteen, twenty-four, twenty-six, thirty-one, thirty-four, nineteen sixteen. And have all of them right here. And I got all the maps and the big stuff at my office. For my lawn, to stay out of the right of way as far as possible without having to drive the property. Because some of them is down in the middle of the ditch, they're everywhere. And so we got it hopefully figured out and with the right old person. And I'll be watching when they start and usually when they start, you know, they give me heads up and we, uh, make sure they print up the ditches on your lawn and all that kind of stuff, you know. And so I have all of them here for each one of those roads. And if we have a motion, the chairman signed that to give approval for the right of way for RC Technology and then. Don, you can go ahead and, um, get your copies, you know, and then you want to send them in, however you want me to do.
I can, I can give them to you.
How, when they cross the road, do they bore, do they dig through there?
They bore across everywhere. They don't ever go across on top, you know, they have a couple of, they always have to bore.
Okay, so, even the ground.
Yeah, they don't go across there anywhere.
But the ditch is it?
The ditches they do, um, knife for the end with though. And very seldom use their place even on gravel, they, I never let them cross anything with, with the knife.
So actually they bore my ditches, they signed modus, they bore the whole. Really? Might be four, five hundred feet, take this thing.
Well, yeah, they can bore a long ways.
Yeah, they do, different spots, yeah. Very appreciative of it.
Nice, I go wine, but it's nice.
Yeah, they, they knife just a little bit of the end of it, voice rougher now.
Well, it has a good job of mining and reusing it out. By then, a few weeks, then that would almost be it.
Okay, if it gets late in the year, you know, then it gets to be where they sometimes won't clean it up very well until the spring, but.
Is there a resolution or what is that?
These are all the railways. The beaten road. Like I say, the map I went through and, and looked at stuff. And these are just the signing of the right of way application to give approval.
Your motion for authorization for me to sign it, it's done. For a second for that. Tom, thank you. Need further discussion on, on the right of way? All in favor, signature five percent sign.
Aye, aye.
Oppose say no, most are curious.
And then, uh, we were talking hopefully about nothing in the future here, it's, uh, nothing happened. Getting another laid for that way. I have two quotes that are here from one from John Beer and one from, one from Gap. And they also, both of them have a quote on here to do a trade-in with the L Volvo. And then both companies have come and looked at the Volvo. And have given us a quote on a trade-in value with that. I'll pass off the partner on the right of way too. Let's see, I think I got. I was, there one more bother there, I'd be like. There shouldn't be even that strong, but I'm sure it'd be going down. So, the first one I give you is on the front page, the lease quote and from John Beer. What they would do is it's two point seven nine percent interest. The annual payment would be a semi-annual, I told them it's probably a double payment in a year for five years. The front page says, um, that it's the equivalent cost to that machine would be a total of three hundred and thirty-two thousand six fifty. And that's worth a payment of thirty-one thousand for our Volvo. So, they would take the thirty-one thousand off right away. The original price is on the map there at three hundred and, uh, three hundred and sixty-three, six hundred and fifty. So they take the thirty-one thousand off the trade. It comes out to be three hundred and thirty-two thousand six fifty. And what we would do is, um, we would take and trade the Volvo. They would take the thirty-one thousand off, they would come and get the Volvo. We would get the new machine and we'd be paying around at least paying around thirty-five thousand eight seventy. That's at two point seven nine percent interest. So, that's how the original price was and taking that off. And on this first page, it's.
That includes the interest too then, that's total?
Yeah, and that's a, we don't have amortization scheduled technically, you know, but that's around what it would be, it's around that thirty-five eight seventy.
And that's just all the most of them now?
That's all the stone equipment with the V plow, with the wing and, um, with the ripper on the back of this one.
Is this actually a lease or just a purchase?
It'd be a lease purchase for five years, like we normally do. And this bid, it's not from Minnesota bid. And the V plow and the wing is off, the Sourcewell bid, like Sourcewell, for then, for the snow equipment only. So that's basically off the Minnesota bid.
So if we, if we make two payments, two annual payments for five years, we own it at the end of that?
Yeah, we would own it at the end of the five years, yes. And that's how we've normally been doing it when we buy equipment. Now on the Butler. So, yeah, on the Butler.
You got deeper pockets than I do.
So with the Butler, the total was three hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight fifty-five. And they're gonna offer twenty-six thousand for the Volvo. So if you take the twenty-six thousand off the original price, they come up with three hundred and fifty-three thousand eight fifty-five. And Chad said it would be about three percent interest. And, uh, no amortization scheduled yet, they would want to approve, you know, our loan. This is the Sourcewell contract that he took his machine off. But the twenty-six thousand dollars on the Volvo is a lot of difference from, you know, six thousand, seven thousand dollars out there.
I assume the differences that were, were setting it up differently, the water town bought three of them for what, three twenty-five a piece or something like that?
Yeah, I don't know if water town has, they don't have as much equipment as far as the V plow, you know, and the wing that I would don't have, so that's a lot of it. Cause the town will usually only have the glade. Cause the column usually only have the blade, cause it's going around, they don't use...
Well, that's why I think it's a different, different number, but I just, the numbers stuck in my head, they have three, between the, three and quarter piece, I think, so...
Yep, and then I think it would be, it's only eight to ten weeks for delivery from John Deere and it's gonna be months for Cat, I don't know. But it is a little bit significantly different, um, or difference between them, so...
Yeah.
Okay, so if, talking about the warranty. Yeah. Sixty months, is that seventy-five hundred hours?
Uh, up to seventy-five hundred hours, yes, that was on the machine, that's normal.
And the other one is sixty months, sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah, the Cat is, the Cat is quoted just for the, for the five years to, for the hundred and fifty, sixty months. That's six thousand hours per year, yes. So that's an extended warranty, but we only want with just the regular five year standard warranty is what he would be doing.
What is the second part of this, I mean Butler, the sixty month, six thousand hour mileage, forty-five hundred? What's that?
Um, where are you talking on that?
Butler.
Right below the, forty bottom.
Oh, you're talking on how it might as long?
Yes.
Yeah, um, that, you're talking already? Yeah, ready to, so you can buy extended warranty, so the extended warranty, if you wanted to buy it, you can, it's basically more money out of pocket, basically, more money paid more for more, uh...
What it looks like it's included, it says?
Cat has a little bit more of a warranty than John Deere. But then, you know, your cats are paying a little more for it too.
My question is, is it sixty months, six thousand hour mileage, mileage?
Oh, okay, so here's the deal on that, how it figures this. They're putting extended warranty in there and what it's doing is saying that one day you gotta come out to look at the machine, I'm not gonna pay the mileage for them to come back and forth. If I don't do it, then I have to pay the mileage. So technically, you have to look at it two different ways. If I think, well, I would rather pay the mileage when they come, if they have to come. Otherwise, we save them money in the long run. Yep, they're paying in advance, they're paying that for their talents. So if I'm paying that, say I want to advance, and all that's saying is in the next five years, I don't have to pay the mileage when they got to come out every time to fix something for the warranty. Cause that's a bump and beyond what you pay them for a warranty. You don't, you have to pay the mileage.
On John Deere, that's not even an option?
On John Deere, um, we, they come out for one, one way and we pay for one way. That's usually the savings on that. Especially if it's something that is warranty, you know, sometimes they might have to come up and fix it. But take account of a big item right there, that's where the warranty, where they come and fix it and we pay one way and they pay the other way. And it seems to save us a little money. If you do that extended warranty, you're always here, you're paying that in the long term and that's them one day, but you might not always use that whole four. We don't know how many trips they might end up doing.
So you want, on the Cat, on the Butler Cat, you want to keep that mileage, or not, that forty-five hundred?
No, the forty-five hundred would be just your regular number five year warranty.
So you would not take?
I would not take. So with that, it's like twenty-one thousand, twenty-five dollars difference between the two quotes. Let me get the total out of there. My suggestion is you'd rather go with the John Deere, it's what, the guys are used to riding with the equipment, um, that's what we've had in the past. Um, we do have a one forty-three A chat for a Cat down the road for a spare which is a new machine. So again, you know, with that twenty-one thousand dollars difference, I don't see going with Cat, so, so... The Cat is the new model, one fifty, it has the joysticks in it instead of steering wheel now, so that could be a learning curve also.
The new Cat's got the joysticks, huh?
Yeah, that would have the joys. The one forties are the ones with, uh, the one forties are the ones with the steering wheel and the handles, you know. We had some John Deeres. John Deere is offering thirty-one thousand dollars for the Volvo, I feel that that could be sufficient. I thought that was a pretty good price to trade for the Volvo itself. I mean, that in the past, last year, I know some of them, those Volvos, and you remember, this is not all the drag of the world, only, you know... The problem is sisters on this Volvo, which they all knew. And they all expected it to give us that purpose, so...
Who are you gonna have as the operator of this new unit?
This one would, I would say gonna go into Dale up north and then this would be a spare system. And the other one, this would be for the south rail, to get out of snow, we run the two rails back south. Cause Leonard has the newer one of the two right now, he's got the last one. And Danny, um, Carlson runs the rail, Tetera, Tom runs the other Cat that's had right over the spare. So he would be running that one that Dale comes down. And the one forty-three would go down itself when we needed it for the south rail.
Yeah, you told us just before, what, we retired a payment this year, right?
Yeah, all our payments are done except for on a new truck. We got one payment on new truck every year and we just got the first payment this year in January. And so it'd be the most, so we have a total of three payments a year.
What, what did we retire this year then?
We retired, uh, the John Deere up in Summit.
The blade?
Yeah, the blade.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so it's kind of like...
So we're just starting, yeah, it's kind of a wash, other than we have the new truck that we bought, so... So we would have...
But we've always had tough payments anyhow, so...
Yep, so we have thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, seventy thousand whatever a year on this blade. And we'd do that for two payments a year and then our new Mac truck is forty-two thousand a year on, on, in January. And I figured we'd rather go with the semi, because the last two times when we bought the blades and went that much quicker, save a little on interest and, you know, get it done. Even though it's two payments a year. I mean, if we're, you know, in all reality, next year, we try to have another new truck, you know, it just adds up too fast, I mean, so, but I don't know what it is.
Sound good? Sound good to you, Tom?
Yeah, I guess, I just looking at the list of things that you, uh, the things that you had on your list that you wanted, I guess, on the...
Yeah, you know, both these...
Z is, I guess that's, that's the way to go.
Both these machines, you know, they're already, our payments are done, they're already seven years old. You know, we get them toward all the years, we get them done and, you know, we just have more problems down the road each time. You know, the only ones to buy back with these machines, you know, earlier was a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars on the buyback, so... At the end of four, at the end of five years before it's up, they're gonna come back with another buyback price for us, so that's guaranteed. You know, that's probably a hundred and sixty-seven thousand actually in five years, you're gonna tune down this machine, so...
I don't know. They're sitting in these, I don't know.
We got Volvo, you know, it's sitting around, that was somewhere around here.
We need our money on that.
We, we ain't never gonna get the money for that one, lots of them bought this trade-in. Would be set now for about five years already.
This is probably the most expensive piece we buy on, on a regular basis.
Well, yeah, this is one of the most expensive, it's the gun they're gonna buy unless you're gonna buy another goeser through the road or out there, you know, something.
When you hear that one up at Dale, that's gotta be ten years old, huh?
I know, that one there is, uh, going to make your goal. I mean, I'm not skilled with machines, I have...
Now it's only seven fifty-something thousand, anyway.
Yeah, we, we did do a motor on that one, that was one, one, uh... When Dennis was still here, I was gonna see. So that's a two thousand twelve. So it's just one on nine years right now. It was a two thousand twelve, I remember.
It seems to me like the blades gonna be like the trucks, you're always gonna have a payment, you know, you finish one damage and you fix another one and then, I think...
Yeah.
If you fall behind, we're, we're, we're gonna be in trouble, I think.
Cause we've fallen behind, you know, like this one here or anyone's gonna have a buyback back now, it's one on nine years already, so, you know...
Wouldn't be accurate, I'd go pick the other choice, but we have them, but just, just for information, if you, if you take that machine, say, oh, it'll last ten thousand hours. And in, I'm assuming it's from Heather, in ten thousand hours, it's gonna be worth thirty-five thousand, it's like the Volvo, subtract that from the beginning, right? That's costing, almost thirty-three dollars an hour to operate it.
Pretty reasonable.
Just the machine.
You think it'd be more?
Here you go at four, five thousand an hour, you got twenty dollars a mile.
Yeah, I can see...
Machine plus fuel plus labor, so when these guys are asking thirty-nine dollars a mile, it's not that expensive. But I think, we got a new mold, that's...
Right.
And when you break it down in the small wrench, it looks fairly beastly.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's, you know, you're gonna, it's gonna cost us as much as does the rail down.
We had over ten thousand and one hundred and seventy dollars on that one, that was... And we had no engine, we had no engine.
Or to put ourselves in a hurry, but we can do it when we need to do it. And then the snow removal was the issue, we didn't have to move the snow, we were totally tired. A lot of blade done, but they had to move snow.
We had a lot of snow.
We don't have, we don't have much choice, I guess. I just, I need just some, maybe a line with a spring pad if you get really swamped that, it's not a bad deal tired, though. Because it doesn't cost anymore than this.
Right, it doesn't cost a lot of energy.
And that's no repair, which it shouldn't be any...
If you remember, when we went back, if you had a, a full, it was eleven blades, it was sixty-eight thousand five hundred square. Where's that oldest John Deere up there that would cop them out and then it was a hundred and thirty-three thousand for the new one, wouldn't be what they were offering. So, and the sixty-five thousand for the Cat, there's no way I'd get rid of ours for sixty-five thousand, I'll use it as much as I do. Cause I put a lot of money into it two years ago. You know, the front end went out on the one drive on the hydraulic motor, we replaced that and we get the other side, we got a new wrench, you know, put in, we're trying to wrench more, you know, it just, it just costs a lot.
We must free mine and bring that one down here. We're damn, that could shouldn't be no problem, we should get behind it, I'm trying to say, you know, a blade, I hope.
Right, yes. But then when we get the summer, like, you know, then dang, jumps on the paper and so we're short again and so then one time's gotta catch it up on the blade, so... Which might change if we get a couple of people hiring on my list, so... So I guess if there's no more discussion on that, if you have a, if you have a recommendation, I can come, do whatever.
See, I'm a bitch, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'd be as big as a... I don't wanna stick any mind in my own, like we said, we can't, no.
But I can, last time we said mind, you understand, I can't get working in my head.
So your motion, you would take delivery on it?
I said eight to ten weeks.
Like that's approved, okay?
That's a jury setting, I wouldn't make it ten on that one. So I thought that was pretty, pretty remarkable, it's gonna come back soon. Eight to ten weeks.
Oh, really? Especially with the COVID thing, you just gotta buy anything.
The problem is when you put the snow equipment on, they have to take it to, take falls, you know, take the falls equipment on it.
How long is that typically?
So they're, you know, they're pretty busy doing equipment all the time, so that's what makes it a little bit longer.
We have to take it there?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we get...
We get it all done, but they have to send a new machine to get that pile of equipment on and fall. So they add it on.
Go just bring it off, pick up the other one and pick it back up soon.
Yep, it'll just be a small part. And then thirty-one thousand, we have the first payment, but I need that payment because that's suitable, so...
Are you saying for a year, calendar year, two?
The first one in the year, twenty-one.
So we'll only have one payment this year?
Right. So that's the recommendation then? Correct?
You want to make a motion to approve? Motion by Tom? Second by Don? Any further discussion?
Just need to clarify something then. The perfect cost is three hundred and thirty-two thousand.
That's accurate.
Cost is actually the plus the thirty-one.
Right.
Yep.
The costing is three hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Yes, the total, yes.
That's on the back page.
It's on the back page, you know, it's two sixty-three, six fifty.
So we're paying what?
Twenty-one thousand less than the other one, twenty-one thousand twenty-five dollars less than the Cat.
How do you get that?
The total cost of what they give for the Volvo on trade and the total cost of John Deere.
Bill and Street F is estimated about the twenty-six thousand, three fifty-two.
Right.
And then three thirty-two, so...
Is that right? Well, I thought you said we, you know, this year does not raise, the three sixty-three does not reflect the...
That they've taken that thirty-one off of that to get that three thirty-two.
They already took the thirty-one off to get the three thirty-two.
And that's, yeah, okay, got it.
Got any bids on the... Should bust in, Pat, anybody else?
Uh, they're looking at the layout machine and, and some of the others, not my bad, two calls. One, a couple of people came yesterday to look at stuff. But just the only two people that I know so far, I mean...
At the way down.
Yeah. The deadline was February, whenever Don put in that February sixth, that was the February sixth?
Yeah, very second.
Second, okay.
So if we don't get any bids on it, we can pull it for that option in the spring and...
Yeah, but on the option, uh, strapped for whatever reason.
They ain't gonna bring much.
So strapped, and that's all we want, yeah, so...
All in favor of the motion to purchase the John Deere seventy, seventy-two motor, grave or signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion carries. And then make the order.
So can I ask who in motion, I missed that?
Oh, good enough.
All right, thank you.
Are you on a map today, just for food for thought, for the summer work?
Yeah.
And then you guys can put it over and, and then like next fucking week or whatever, if you guys got comments or things that you wanna discuss with that, we can give it out. So, um, the yellow is patching, but what it is, is it's, when you look at the map, don't look at it like, oh, we're doing these miles. Alls I did is blotted on those roads, them are the ones that do patching. It's not like it's a long stretch.
Little big orderly projects, yes.
Yeah, so this is patching here, know where all the rest stuff is and then the chip sealing, what I wanna do is thirty-three, the Eastman Road for sure after we get the great traffic done. And then there's two miles up by some of that, Old Lady one thirty-one and the bottom left corner needs to be done, that's two miles that's been over there for a long time. And that has a lot of traffic on it, over five hundred cars a day. That's been crack sealed for quite a while. Um, and it wouldn't take much to go do those two miles and the chips are right there, a mile away, you just go in there and get them and haul them on there and do it. And looking at, if the prices are down, I don't know, the prices of oil is going up dramatically, about forty cents, forty cents down already just yesterday and today. It's going up in the oil, we just ordered oil today to top off our stuff because it's going up drastically. Now, if we got chips in oil and it cost us thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty mile last year, we don't know how far that's gonna go this year. But I was hoping to do twenty-five miles for sure. So I had the Eastman Road, I had the Combe Road fifteen and twenty-two up there and then I have Combe Road twenty-four south of the valley, which has a little bit of patching in there than the chip seal and that's, it'll be a pretty good road then. And that has quite a bit of traffic on it, so, but it's just food for thought, I mean, that's what I'm looking at right now, far as chip seal projects, I mean...
Will we go to chip seal like you did last year, earlier than later, so we make sure we get it done?
Well, I'm hoping with the economy that Ben doesn't push me to go over there first.
What's the cost a mile of chip seal?
That was just the oil, that's all, everything. Just the oil was thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty a mile and that's, last year, it was two dollars in some a gallon last year.
Thirteen thousand bucks a mile?
Yeah, it was just for the oil, for the oil, so that's... Yeah, it was just for the oil, for the oil, so that's not counting, I got that cost for any of our equipment. That's not counting the chip for six and a half dollars a ton for that.
I think the sooner you can lock in any and all of that oil stuff for the summer, the better.
See, usually we do bins in, you know, March or April, or if we do them at the end of March, and March sometimes we're near near the price, but sometimes I get hesitant because they don't know how much it's gonna go up in the spring.
Yeah.
But last year was two seventy-nine a gallon, see, if what it came out to be, it was actually thirteen thousand nine, can't be, I'm sorry. It was thirteen thousand nine fifty, and last year it was six hundred and seventy-three, fifty-six per ton, so they sell it by the ton, and then I break it down by the gallon. And I, I know it's, because right now, gas and oil.
Well, I was just reading too, like, one of the OPEC, the Saudi, their production by a million gallons.
Well, I, as, as the COVID thing, so it's all, people are gonna travel more, and there's more demand.
And plus, they knocked, they closed down the white line, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah, just, yeah.
So this, uh, you know, this cost, hopefully, you know, we still gotta spend down to four hundred thousand dollars for chip seal, and that takes a chunk of chance, so. But anyway, this is kind of the, I mean, we got a lot of patching that needs to be done, um, a lot of breakups, but the, you know, the chip seal, if you can keep it twenty, twenty-five miles, twenty, twenty-five miles.
When, when do you, when would you be able to forecast striping? You'd have to obviously stripe the, the, the chips.
I already have my stripings again, but we're gonna have to pre-con, we can cut that out, because I have Comer Road seven doesn't need it, I put it on the map, but I'm gonna take that off later, um, but that's not a big deal, so we got over fifteen thousand dollars in striping if we do all of what we're doing. So, but last year, you know, we spent maybe six. But that's gonna be determined later and see, and we can always change that at our pre-con meeting, but they wanted them to never, it's a well.
Yeah, I mean, driving around, I mean, I know it's, it's, you know, it's a big expense, and I thought a lot of, a lot of other expenses, but yeah, there's, there's a lot of places you can't see, can't see a satellite anymore.
Well, exactly, and then technically, the law says, if you don't have four hundred cars a day, you don't need the satellite, so that's ridiculous. Because most of ours can even, anything that we have is a lot of ADT on it, I tried to set it on it, and we had a couple of years. And in the hills, we do it, we alternate every two years in the hills on twenty, and up on thirty-four, that's just no matter what. Because in the hills, when it gets bad weather and foggy.
Nothing to follow.
We haven't done edge line or again, but.
Yeah, I think that's a little bit, you put your tire on the yellow line, and you stay on that sucker, you can see it.
Yeah, well, the white line too, you can see a lot in the winter, but.
Yeah.
It's also on board.
Yeah, it just seem like, if you got a yellow line, that's, that's a big hill.
And we try to do that on the horse, because there's a lot of them that don't have a lot, so. Well, that, that's all I have today, just, Don, if you wanna pick yours or any ones and make copies.
I'll put copies in your box, and I'll be going off to Mercy.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have today, I guess.
Appreciate it, but thanks, Ed.
Saturday and Sunday was kind of a little hit and miss, I didn't go out, but we went out and did everything yesterday, the lane was kind of bad in one lane. But I wasn't gonna take the whole time on Sunday, I guess, so. It was a hit and miss, up there, I saw it was worse, down McCrowan, down in the bits, and so, so. Everything in between, moving here and there, the jump, dumps, and I figured. Uh, no, everybody must be very goofy, because they didn't call, and now we got them all done yesterday, and then this morning, I had to back down to the southeast to get that covered a little bit, otherwise, um, we're signing and marking groceries and doing stuff in the shop and maintenance and changing oils and. So, you know, it's busy, so we're keeping, if we can keep this, when it down, we got a little more draw up in the summer.
I'm sure that was pretty heavy, the snow up in his area.
It was really heavy. And it would came across over there, and then it came down across over there, and that was, got bad, yeah, shit, so more. Pretty good, so, yeah, everybody kind of there with us, because then, I went out Saturday, but I wasn't gonna send everybody out, but it wasn't done yet, and it was blowing and snowing that till Sunday, and I went out. Came by until Monday morning, you know, it would have been worse, I guess, but I had to go anywhere. It was better than the storm we had before with all the areas.
We got a nice one.
Thank you. Township.
We got that, you know, five, yeah, six.
Tom Wonders?
He lives at that new house, and Tom, the girl, Tom, that they put on that big hill on there.
It's on its own.
You can dance up there, I don't think other than snare or anything.
I'm gonna do this northeast to where that, that other bridge was, where it was walking out.
On the counter over there, you know, my, it's like going up there fast, there's, there's.
Northeast of there, Bob.
I already do.
Pretty close by that.
Okay, it's northeast, Mike Wonders, we, I got Township Road in northeast.
I think that's forty-five thousand five.
Yeah, it's a township affair.
Yep.
Can I just stick it there on your thing?
Yeah.
This might copy that one, yes.
Yeah, it's right north Wonders, right, so they need to go east on that Township Road.
That is, is March, I think, yeah.
Or put it in my drawer, okay, because I won't be here next week.
I'll take, I'll be, is what I need, I have.
Look, I didn't get a call, but you knew for the, uh.
Yeah, we got two gates coming this month, and I'm not doing pricing yet, we have to wait for those. But then we, they would just fly through us, and they would do like, I mean, they wanna price it, but they're not asking from the company.
They're, they're gonna ask.
Ask for the five hundred dollars. Because it's, um, it's five hundred dollars.
Well, they, we're just gonna get a grace of a call, but.
Oh, you want us to buy the call?
No, they're gonna buy everything. We're gonna, we don't wanna help you. We're gonna, I mean, we got, how many bridges, yours?
Yeah, I see. Yeah, they're asking.
Yeah, you would not do.
They get a call.
That shows you the sign.
They get through it through us, but it's all people.
But they can even actually get it themselves, yeah.
You should sign the theory, is that what you're asking?
The board.
Well, that one must be late.
You should sign it down there, he's there and.
Guard Field's got one, one more township, so, yeah. We can, wanted to fix that one bridge.
Me and Oliver, you ready for chat?
Well.
I look.
It'd be totally up to them.
I'm multitasking.
How's that working out?
Okay.
So you just have one D, it's all the love of the world.
My arm hurt a little bit, and that's tighter, but Bobby didn't have anything.
Really?
His arm wasn't even so.
Huh.
Do you have any missile, yes, for us today?
Do you have any at all?
I do have a, I, I guess I do have a question, I'm in the, Tyler was gonna bring it up. The transport security person said that she should be getting the after seven hour increase, but I didn't, I didn't know if we.
That person is part-time?
Well, this is, she's, she is part-time.
And they follow that same?
So then after seven hours, then she'll start getting that?
After seven hours?
Seven years, after seven years.
Yeah, well, it would, it would take her twice as long to get there, because she's only half time with that.
Well, I didn't know if you guys were going by hours or by, well, by year or something.
Yeah, who knows what hap, when this was, this thing was started, this schedule.
No, you guys, well, you guys did that back in, I got the minutes there.
But once anyone changed it all up.
Yeah, normally part-time is based on hours.
Yeah.
But clerical and genetic, and, and since that is a separate thing, yes, that's.
Okay, yeah.
Right?
So it's you get it up to the hours or the years?
No, they're up to the years. Yeah, she's got five thousand, one hundred and forty-one hours.
Yeah, we're gonna work ten, ten hours, that's a good one.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that's what matters.
Yes, that person should be here, if we have.
Sure.
Because you did, uh, on March twenty, up to two thousand and eighteen, is when you guys put this in, two hundred, and.
Is this only for clerical and genetic?
Okay.
Does not refer to.
Have that, oh, and that's, that's what we were looking at.
Yeah.
So I thought, well, I'm better, we're gonna have. That's nice. Christie had, Christie hadn't taken, you know, keeping track of her hours, so she looked at it and said, hey, you know.
Okay, we can get the sheriff in there later?
Hey, I just, I just. First, you must have turned on a new leak, and we're just flying through this. What's going on?
I think we're getting more organized.
Yeah, it's working out the way it is. I think we're not taking by the hour. Well, I just saw something, I think one of the last meetings they had, what, it's like forty-five minutes, so.
They're always done by ten.
And we gotta, we gotta waste the go, they've got a pretty high bar.
Their time's down by ten o'clock, I mean.
Who are we? They don't seem to have any discussion at all. Guy just comes in, makes a report, move him on.
Grand County?
Yeah, maybe every other week.
County? I've been counting, maybe? Yeah. Yeah, they're usually an hour, hour and a half, maybe. What do you think, those must be?
I thought I saw that car, and all, and what we're gonna do, or?
You know what, I asked Tyler to bring you a statement.
Well, we're all.
And, 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 and. There's some, there's, there's, I guess, what I brought mine, the, 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 the. Again, because I get to pursue the other models, what the requirements would be on the lease, and this, this was about personal guaranteeing and that kind of.
But I honestly expect it was just that particular bank. Let's be honest, I never heard of it, yeah. You, what, what we just.
I think they were, they were so hard, and then it doesn't make you retire.
But I'm on these equipment.
Yeah, yeah.
Personal guarantees there, so.
That's just a bank.
And after I got her comment on the, on, you know, you just alluded to, was that you would be responsible for the condition of the vehicle, when it got, wearing the tires, any excessive scratches or. Yeah, and then they also, they also talked about, well, if you're gonna drive it on gravel, you know, then the tires, you know, and they said, well, that's the company. He, that guy included back to the company. It wasn't people that I, I was, I.
Oh, my?
Well, so, they said, you know, if there's a lot of pinning on the gravel, it's like, well, if we're gonna have a comedy vehicle, and if Carrie does go, ends up going to the lake, she's gonna have to get gone, grab it and get back.
But sometimes it could be residual, almost, or it's just a big difference that are, in a, in a monthly basis. High demand vehicle, like. Yeah, the residual, you get it, you get it by lease, but I won't pay you, but I won't, I have no deal with shit, and really, they're on network, you know, he's got stuff, and so he's, uh, for the gold man. Hold, hold an individual.
Yeah, it's over a county, because there's companies, you know, that lease vehicles all the time. And, uh, so does the finance officer, the president of the company have to go and say, okay, I'll be responsible for.
Who was the bank? Did they say who the lease company was, or?
No, he did not say. I got a message from Tyler that he's on his way, so. Be back, talk anytime, but.
Somebody with that Maverick Steakhouse and, what, the, the Gospel, yeah, pretty, they have a nice, nice big steak menu, that I'm ready to be at a week.
Is that the same one that's being, is that same one that?
Aberdeen, and then there's another one, big like Saint Flower, so there's, there's three, I guess, I had a type of event, like.
Um, any contact for Jim Pearson on COVID shots?
Yeah, yeah, I turned that tree into him and said, you can get it up to CDP right away, so.
Okay.
I wonder if we should share this one with Jay. This is what we got from Sarah, our, our company nurse.
Uh-huh.
I, I don't know if you've seen this one.
No.
That's kind of what the, uh, the accounting priorities are.
Okay.
Was trying to see where our staff would fit in on, on that timeline.
Was, they were being a little bit more clear, I thought, this one. With the sixty-five and under, sixty-five and older, already, right?
Well, we kind of, we were looking at it here, and it was kind of that one D, one E, right, home, away. One of the last phases before it goes to the phase two is what we adopt the ball.
Yeah, because when I look at this one, basically, I think, you know, they're pretty well down here, because we would fall in, and I think they were starting to do some teachings, and I think CDP is moving ahead, so.
But I hadn't seen the timeline table, whatever, whatever, as far as that goes, but they gave you a pretty good picture, and you know, on this deal too, I mean, the CDC and the state, I mean, they try to move by the same you know, guidelines, but everybody has their little interpretation of how and when things should work, and I guess that's kind of what they wanted with the state, that.
You know, I really think South Dakota's right up there in terms of getting the, getting that medicine, and getting it in the arms, they're like, well, they're like, well, the top four, five in the nation.
Exactly, that's right.
They did a good job on that.
I guess it's a little, a little.
Been watching, never heard of it.
Let me out of loading you.
Young man, you have to, you have to, you have to. They tweeted up, if they have our contact numbers, if they have extra vaccines, you know, they're really gonna call individual people. You get it, man.
Tommy, he turns a list into Jim Pearson, and Jim Pearson was taking it up there, but if I was you, I would still call.
I, I did, I'm a wife, I should say.
Yeah, yeah.
But I've, I've had people say, well, it comes through your primary care position, well.
No, 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 because I called, I called CDP, because the way it's seventy-five, so he and I are both on the list of CDP.
Yeah.
I've talked to a few people that have, calls from their primary care provider, and even have gotten letters from the, like Sanford or whoever, you know.
Well, I'm, Sanford, there's this Mike church, where's, if they contact, and said, well, contact, but I will, how would they? There's no Sanford, there's no Sanford, not a town, so I would.
And I, I got the letters from Sanford too, just because that's where I go, you know, once a year. Because lots, good and old, the time limit they have, it's first time, we don't, we, yeah, we actually do.
And I understood they were giving like a hundred doses, you know, at a time.
Yeah.
You know.
That's what I said on Facebook, they did a hundred, a hundred senior last, I guess.
I saw that, where you know where they had some of the, our ten-year-old. I saw that, where you know where they had some of the, our ten-year-old, yeah, close to nine-year-old, or brain staple. Earl Snyder.
That was Rachel Russell, and the street when that came along, got her shot, they were, they were. She said, nothing, no, no, no effects whatsoever.
Did, did, did CDP still have a bank in Russell?
I, certain days I think.
All right.
Have a good day.
Morning?
Morning.
Uh, yeah. Don't have anything pressing today, uh, just gonna give you updates on a couple things. Um, the inmates were at fifties, we're down from last week. Uh, we talked about Deputy Bean being in, I misspoke, I think I said color guard, it's actually honor guard, um, that's where he's at this week. He, he anticipated, um, a requirement to, to be. Two or three hours a month, maybe, um, and that's just, that's just if he gets, if he gets called for, uh. For service, so, which, uh, he didn't, he didn't anticipate that to have a, have a huge requirement for this, so. Uh, our deputy in training is getting sworn in this afternoon. Uh, I, my hope and anticipation is for him to be. Being prepared to getting on the road on the zone by, uh, March. So, he's been, he's been going through training this month, working on DUI, uh. DUI investigations, a lot of the going on, paperwork and stuff at the jail, and then now, after this afternoon, though, they have, able to actually. Take part in, uh, duties as a police officer. He wasn't able to do that based on state statute, so after diswearing today, turned twenty-one yesterday, so he's able to, to go through that. He already qualified with his firearm, uh, he did that with the, the city police department, uh, last week, so he's, he's gonna be already set to go. Uh. One thing that I wanted to, uh, bring up and discuss, um, because I, you're gonna, you're gonna see it when you look at. Uh, the jail budget and stuff for. After this paid period, um, but what the possibility would look like for us. Moving our jail administrator from an hourly position to a salary position. My concern is that he spends a lot of time there. Uh, he is, he is one of those kind of employees that if there's somebody that's unavailable or they need help, he's driving from home, he's going out there and working. And he had some medical issues with one of our staff, she was having to be admitted into some falls. You know, she was, she was out, put his staff kind of behind, and he was, nobody volunteered to, to take over, it was him, so. I wasn't, I'll be honest, I wasn't aware of all the overtime that he was accruing over this last paid period, uh, and after seeing it. And knowing, and knowing what his involvement has been out there over the past month with, with trying to make sure that jail is more organized. Uh, I just have this feeling that it might be more beneficial financially to look at the possibility of moving them to a salary. But I, I.
Do you think some of this is just because he's just starting up and his time goes on and he would spend less time, is he organizing, or is it?
There, there's a good possibility of that, um, you know, he's been, he's been trying to reorganize jail files that are forty years old.
What, what, okay, for what purpose?
Because they've been, they've been keeping them right in our booking area, um, and it's, it's created a, a problem in our booking area to keep fifteen filing cabinets. In our booking area where our booking staff is trying to work, um, he's moved those into another area we've talked about, um, trying, he's been going through the process of. Uh, with the state, of seeing what he needs to do to have those moved down to peer. Um, the, the physical, the physical paperwork.
You have to.
They, they have to be kept, um, everything that he's found so far says that they have to be kept. So there is a possibility of them scanning them in, he's keeping them on a digital, a digital record, but then we have to actually move the physical file. So he's, he's going through that, that process. So I just, uh, it's not a decision that I'm asking you to make right now, it's just something to maybe, to maybe think about.
We went to this a couple of years ago, and your father administration did something, we used to have exempted, non-exempt employees, and they changed something, if you were below a certain dollar level, you, you couldn't be. Non-exempt or exempt, I can't remember what the terminology was, but, because they were, they were just, they were putting people into, uh. Exempt status, you didn't get the overtime, they're saying, nah, that's not right, so it was tied to a dollar, I don't remember what that dollar level was, and. Then something changed with the administration, because a great part of time with the legislature came in, I don't know if that even went away or not, but there was some rules regulating.
Okay.
Who can be exempted, I can't.
You had nobody to administer, you know, you didn't have any employees that answered to you, that, that.
That might have been something too.
If you were in charge of other employees.
I think it's. Cause he, he talks about that, do you remember that? The exempt, the non-exempt, and the sergeant retirement, not being.
Yeah, if you look on page seven of the personnel appointed official, um. An individual who is appointed by the community nurse, presently including but not limited to the director of equalization and highways superintendent, this position may or may not have. Supervisory duties, and it's either salary or paid on an hourly basis.
This was a criteria, it had to do with the dollar amount, and if you, you know, above a dollar amount, you could be a non-exempt employee, but if you below, you didn't want to be. Anyway, if we get there, maybe we can just call.
Well, he's at seventeen ten per hour, um. Because he's been here over a year, and he can't, can't decelerate.
Oh, okay, yeah, raise the threshold to, you gotta be at forty-seven thousand, forty-seven, four hundred and seventy-six, effective two thousand sixteen, hundred and two.
Do you have an idea what you would propose?
No. I, I, I just wanted, I just wanted you to be aware of it, so when you, when you see it come up, I, I want you to know that I am aware of it, and it is a concern, and I just. We're dealing with some, we're, we're trying to work through some staffing, staffing issues out there, um. I, I am involved with, with, uh, James, and as far as what's going on with the staff and issues that he's having with the staff, and. And we have kind of a, I've been working with him on trying to. Improve the standards on, on what we're expecting of our, of our staff out there, uh. Like I said, with the police officer thing, we have people that are, that are, you know, interested in, in getting experience and things like that, so holding on to people that. Tend to. Make it harder on the rest of the staff, it's, that's a concern to me, I, 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 when you're, when our senior staff is, is having to work. You know, double because somebody else just decides, when you're warned two days ahead of time, if there's gonna be a snowstorm and you don't make arrangements. Those things start to become a problem, and it, and it hurts our, it hurts our budget as well, and I, we've talked about that, and so we're trying to, trying to work on that. With him, but it's just kind of something that just takes, just takes a little bit of time. Uh, the only other thing that I have is I have a, I am meeting with the New Effington City Council on. The seventh. So they had some, they had, I gave them about a month, a month in advance, so they had some issues that they wanted to, to discuss as well. And I gave them kind of a heads up on what I would be discussing with them, and it didn't, it didn't seem to be. A concern.
Your last report was, I think, that the, the city didn't, didn't want to sign the contract until they got at least one, one other entity signed up. Could we be sending them a monthly bill? We know they're twenty-six days in January, they haven't paid it yet, could we be sending them a prorated monthly bill until they sign the contract, and put the contract in effect two years from that date?
You mean, send, is this a prorated bill?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they should be sliding on paying bills for, for those people wanting a month or so. Based on the old rate? Or is it a new rate?
I think that would maybe just add salt to the wound.
Yeah, I kind of love that idea.
I'm, I think it could be handled verbally.
I'm hoping, I'm hopefully.
And let them know that it's coming?
February, this meeting, this meeting in New Effington in February, I'm hoping that that, that that goes well, and hopefully it resolves the issue and. You know, but then, they're already looking at, it will be March before they'll have their next meeting and be able to approve it.
I just don't like the fact that they think that the drive is sleds, it's, it's not their sled to drive, it's ours, and I think that, uh. I understand their concern, but again, uh, it's, it's not their sled to drive, it's ours.
You said February seventh, the meeting on Sunday?
Oh, that'd be the wrong, Monday, sorry, it'd be the next day, in February. Second Monday.
But that is a good point, Don, is doing this would be taking some time to make those, make those rounds, make those decisions and stuff.
It's as hard as everybody, all the things, me on, and me on the same day.
It just is, you know, originally thought, well, the, the conversation was, well, we'll, we'll deal with this in January, well, January is about over with, and we're just getting, you know. We can rule it along, it's just gonna go on for two months, and then I pay the bill, and it's, I, I don't think, even if you go back to the old rate, I mean, that, that's fine. But I just, I think that they, they should be paying the bills. And we, well, they can't pay the bill, people give money, a bill's paid, so I think they should be, just a thought, I mean, if there's no review, that's fine, but they just. They want this to go off early. Few of their, their.
But you're right, they should be paying for something.
That would be at the forty, forty.
Forty dollars.
Forty-four thousand five hundred?
Well, that's, I think it was forty, is that the name one? Yeah, I think it was forty-one thousand.
Well, yeah, that's what's, first you said that the new rate.
Yeah, well, they're, they're saying, well, that was just, that was just my opinion. Which is forty-one thousand five hundred.
Do you, you guys have any other visits, uh, scheduled for February?
Uh, Corona's, Corona's city council meets on the same day, so, um. I, I'm trying to set up a meeting with the school board in Wilma. And then I'll try to set up a meeting with the Summit School Board as well, um, it'll just depend on what days, what days they call. If, if I'm able to get in, uh, the, my hope would be to meet with Wilma's school board. And then in the next, in the next two months, the, some of the, I mean, uh, Department of Justice ramps will start to play a role as well. And that, that'll play a role, that'll play a role into that as well, as far as, you know, I, I have. I have some numbers. That are put together. I don't have copies of these, I haven't shown them to anybody, uh, but this is kind of the, a cost analysis of what, what I put together. You know, looking at twenty, twenty dollars an hour for two thousand and eighty hours a year, including retirement, social security insurance. Vehicle costs, uh, at, at about forty thousand dollars, vehicle plus equipment, um, insurance at three hundred and fifty dollars, tires and oil change for a year, about two thousand dollars. And the dispatching services for those three communities, uh, Corona, Summit, and Wilma, uh, are included in there at that ten seventy eight. That's rate that we came up with, that's came up with based on, uh, call volume, uh, and that.
You sold.
That dollar amount, and that, that, uh, for those three communities comes about three thousand nine hundred dollars. And then the radio and computer, and other equipment, the total annual cost for a police officer coming into approximately eighty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Is your, your forty-seven thousand per vehicle?
Uh, yes.
Is that sort of, you're gonna expense the whole, cost of vehicle in one year?
Every three years, so it'd be a third, a third of the vehicle a year.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, so I, 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 I cut that, I cut that in thirds, to about thirteen thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars a year, to, to expunge it out to be about a, a vehicle every three years, um, for that individual. An annual, an annual cost, uh, and we've, I did this based on population, so if you look at a Wilma population, um. Comprising fifty-six percent of those three communities, and just by that community size, uh, it'd be a monthly cost for them of about three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Annual cost of forty-six thousand five hundred ninety-two. Summit makes up thirty-two percent of those three municipalities, that's two thousand two hundred dollars, annual cost of twenty-six thousand. Corona, twelve percent of that municipality population, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars a month. Uh, just under ten thousand dollars of the annual cost. And then looking at what that hourly, I, then I broke it down further as far as what that hourly time would look like per week. Uh, that would put an officer in the Wilma area twenty-two hours a week, in the Summit area, just under thirteen hours a week, in the Corona area, five hours. It's been putting those three municipalities. Yeah, well, it, it's, the thing is, is we're not, our deputies right now are not able to do law enforcement. They're not able to do near the law enforcement activity that they should be doing as police officers. They end up, they end up being retroactive call takers, you know. Three calls piled up, you know, in the afternoon, that weren't urgent, that weren't, wasn't something that the sheriff had to run out and do right at that second, you know. Somebody had something, you know, stolen three days ago, but a deputy has to go there, and now a deputy's not doing your speed enforcement, he's not doing your DUI enforcement. Not doing any drug enforcement, he's just off the roadway, um, and are just. It, it's just, it limits, it limits the amount of work that police officers in Roberts County are able to do. To actually make the communities and the roads safer, um, and that's what putting this police officer in those three communities would do, would be. And that's what putting this police officer in those three communities would do, would be to lessen that burden on, on deputies having to go and take those calls, because you would essentially have a deputy designated to that area, um, that would be able to alleviate that pressure.
And you're proposing those communities to pay that bill?
Yeah.
You, you would be the administrator, the supervisor?
Yes.
Okay, and it'd be no difference then if they were hired in a private firm?
Yes, exactly.
So it's.
Or, or, yeah, basically they're just, basically we are taking on, we are taking on the deputy who's in there contracting the, the time from, from us.
Yeah, the ideal of that person, that they can live in that area.
Yes, and that's what we'd be, that's what we would be looking for ultimately is, is an officer that's living in, you know, the, one of those three communities. And that will be, that will be part of that, uh, that'll be part of that job description, uh, upon that hire. That's a good number. And I know that, I know that that makes it more difficult, but you know what? We have, we have officers that are, that are crawling out of these major, uh, police departments and looking for, looking for opportunities like this in communities where they feel like they can make a difference and that they're supported by their, supported by their community. So if there is an opportunity to just put something like that on the table, we don't ever have to ask, I guess we'll never get the, we'll never get it, so. So that's where we're at. Uh, Dennis, I did make a, I did make a call about the state bid prices on vehicles and I haven't heard anything back from you yet.
I thought maybe Barry would just have a file sitting there with the best of the vehicles after you.
I haven't, I haven't.
You have a publicist, it's not a priority, but you don't get the appala until it gets replaced.
Pat had access to that as well?
He might have, yeah.
Can't anybody go on that?
I'm not sure how it works, to be honest, but I just don't know. Is there anywhere back from a surplus vehicle coming in to replace the wreck?
I, I haven't heard, I need to call Thielen today and see if they were able to come up and inspect that vehicle. I haven't heard back from the address of the vehicle.
But I think you had a word in the clear.
Yep, and they got.
That you were on the, the media list for looking at replacing it?
Yep, and I had, I did get an email back from, from Highway Control on, on some vehicles. But, uh, I want to say, SUVs are right around that thirteen to fifteen thousand dollar mark. So. So I'll, uh, I'll keep kind of looking into, looking into that, you know, and they, those would come, those would come already outfitted with, uh, a lot of the material already in it, the cages and, and those kinds of things, so. We would just, we would, for the most part, maybe just need to remove some of our equipment from, from a vehicle and transfer it.
Re-transfer.
Which are some of the major expenses anyway.
I, I think if I remember right, we were quite a ways on the upside of the last one that we wrecked. It's paid about twelve thousand, we ended up buying one for eight.
Yeah.
To replace it, so.
And that was because, and, uh, I was listening to Barry talk to Kiefer about why that was, um, between the price of the vehicle and the price of the outfitting, uh, that it ended up actually coming out on top, but it's great.
I'm good, that's not, uh, the Deco Surplus property catalog. And it needs to be able to, but, but it's gotta be, like, talk to Jake, cause I know, and, and Bobby used to be on it, it's about.
Well, we're on it.
Okay, there you go.
But a lot of times with a surplus.
I mean, as far as getting a vehicle.
That's a different, that's a different kind of a thing of what, it'd be like purchasing a new.
There's a state bid.
Shimming thing. Like down charger, you know, come to the dealership.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that was last pivot to. In the, the Bobcats, that all computers say good.
Yes, even on the surplus property, you know, it's like a shimming tub, two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen, sure, you see, but, I, it, it's worth booking.
All right, well, thanks for.
Thank you guys very much.
Yep.
Good luck, good work.
That's all right, thank you, God.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's got his hands full.
Not necessarily, uh, get a cop, just to get a cop, that's a.
Well, we're, we're gonna take out a lot more responsibility than just no one.
Yeah, nothing, I mean, when we first started talking, it was like, okay, we could find some of the, you know, twenty hours a week and we can use the other twenty hours a week to offset the overtime expenses. Well, that, that's a, that's a winning situation for us, but this is just the headache of taking on a cop and what do you get for it? I mean, his, his comment was, you know, we're not doing things that they should do on a, on a timely basis, like, you know, investigating a burglary or this or that, but.
Well, I understand, you know, if they're, if we have a more presence in some of these communities, that we'll maybe have less time to deal with them.
Sure.
Or, we can deal with them in a more timely fashion, but if, you know, if I were those communities, they're like, well, we just will hire our own. I mean, that's what Ross looked at when they were, even whether they were on the contracts, they're telling you or whatever. When it looks at what it might cost to contract, they were like, well, we might as well retire our own, you know, like, they were, it's all these hours, you know?
It just gets messy too, that I go back to my, my situation, I know around that, they were, they had their own possible, blah, blah, but they were just, get certified, move on, get certified, move on, so they contracted with, uh, we, uh, with the.
The driver's county.
County. And then the big argument was, well, we're paying you X amount of dollars, I think that's the number was, but like, you need to spend more time in our, in our city, you know? So then all they do is just sit in front of the Legion, watch cars drive by all day, well, that's not really buying a whole lot. And there's like, well, well, he gets called off enough a call or something, when you went to, I went to Kiefer, and we'll see if this will be out, he can set a constant battle.
Well, with the, with the old trend of leaving everything, I'm not sure we have a part that we need short to it.
We are, we're one.
That's what I think, if we hire one, just give some support to these communities, on the other hand, we'll help our county work. But if we spend all our time at, at those communities, well, then maybe the county itself can be.
No, it's just, it's just a management duty of what the. You know, we're not.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's a good principle, but I think that maybe Tyler's overselling our hours, you know? Cause maybe.
Maybe you give, uh, Ra, with, uh, Wilma, who wanted this in the first place, maybe they say, yeah, we'll take half of it, we're not gonna take it all, well, maybe take that off, we'll just have it and then put the rest of it on overtime.
And what about Kiefer?
There would be no, I, I doubt there'd be any money for it.
No, but so they get no time? We still gotta cover those communities, you know? What about, whether or not you're gonna agree to, what, you know, you still have to supply the law enforcement, I mean, you can't just ignore them.
No, not at all.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, exactly.
But I think we're gonna see a difference, Tyler is taking a shift.
I know.
Where a previous one didn't.
Fun to say, and I think, I think even, even despite that, it's kind of short-handed as far as numbers fit.
We should have.
And not doing this would, it would, maybe if he could sell half the time and the county could make use of that after we limited that overtime, you get some more, you know, a good, good, full raise back.
I think we always, we're supposed to have five full-time days, yeah.
Big army, and a lot of.
And we're not seeing the full potential of our new company because he's not on March, you know?
Police are here.
Police are here.
But it, it seems that's a, you know, Tyler, you know, pat on the back for trying, trying to make some change, trying to get some things, things.
I think, I think, but you're a big principle, it just, it just, I hope he doesn't oversell it, or, or. I mean, what happens if, I mean, he just used their populations, so.
Right.
So what happens if Summit says, well, we want twenty hours and Wilma wants twenty hours and, Corona wants ten hours, they're like, oh, you got fifty.
Now we got a.
No, you're, you're, yeah, so I would say, I hope he doesn't oversell himself, well, I think he's on the track.
Well, I think any new situation too, uh, with, with James, that that will eventually reduce itself down some, you know?
Well, I'd like.
Stepping into any new, you know, change this and it's gonna, you know? The, the thing about employees being absent due to weather conditions and that type of, that, that doesn't, that doesn't sit real well. I think there's, there's a lot of employees and, and I did it when I was in business too. You know what, I'll come and get you, when the shift is over, I'll take you home. And I know that those deputies would do that too for any of the other things.
Usually that's a result of the fact that it was a lot of the hammer and all, that they'll become, say, oh, it's been snowing, I'm, I can't.
Yeah.
If, if they said, oh, we'll come and get you.
Then you have an excuse.
We used to have strongholds, you know, I mean, we had employees that.
I had.
I had guests at our house, you know?
Yeah, well, you guys got to employ at the, at the hospital, so, so sort of, she packs a bag and she spends the night.
Just having the shore.
Not a lot of people would do that, but she does.
Yeah.
I don't know, offered our basement for some of the hospital workers, I mean, it's like, hey, they can come and sleep in the basement or?
We're looking to throw a party next week, didn't want to mess it up, I was, do we leave you basement?
Sure.
Hey, we come with breakfast in the morning?
Oh, we make a reservation.
There's a stove down there. And a fridge.
Okay. All we need to cook, in the bar, Tim.
Do you, do you bring your own breakfast?
Yeah.
All right. What else do we have? We're good, I'm here on two thousand? Sure, most pretty, Jerry?
Don't pay, don't pay.
Oh, no, we didn't pay, we didn't pay, we, we was tipped early all times. About took that down, we, we, we wanted to pay bills, we were second for that. I'd say, we, all in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Carrie.
Hey, do you want a moment in the jury?
Hi.
Second for that. All in favor of that one, signify by saying hi.
Bye.
We're here. Thank you.
I don't know what, I don't know.
Yeah, probably, I think what they, what they asked was that.
I don't recall that, I think, I think a lot of that information, because I'm, it's too tall, it's too tall. It's a secret. It'd be comparable because of the calling.